Welcome to the January 8th, 2013, first meeting of the year of the Raymond Select Board. We have a rather thick, I would say, or was it some word like that, agenda today. So we'll get started with the approval of minutes of the previous meeting, December 11th.
Motion approved of the minutes dated December 11th, 2012.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, I would just like to add, and again, these are the written minutes in the DVD, are the official record, but under number four, New Business Report on the Wreath Project, co-chairs, Mrs. Dodson, Mrs. Gifford, it was A, so it would be New Business 4A. The last sentence there was, "Mr. Levitt also thanked the business community and thought it met the goal of public and private partnerships," and indeed, I did say that, "but more importantly, I thank the taxpayers of the town of Raymond for their support of the Beautification Committee."
Thank you. All in favor? Now, now onto New Business. We'll go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Title I, MRSA, subsection 405, 6E, for a pending land use legal matter.
Second. All in favor? Executive session. Concession.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the town CEO, along with town attorney, to enter into mitigation process on a land use legal matter.
Mediation.
Mediation, excuse me.
Second.
(laughing).
All in favor? At December 11th, 2012, Board of Selectmen meeting Selectmen and Parliamentarian Joe Bruno asked for a point of order for clarification regarding Selectman Charles Levitt's use of public comment. In a letter to the town manager, which is attached, the town attorney advised the Selectmen that they could vote to adopt clarifying language to be incorporated into the Board of Selectmen bylaws and policies. And it happens that the town attorney is here now. And would you explain this, Sean?
Sure. The question that was posed to me is, is it proper for a Board of Selectmen member to get up and speak as a member of the public on any item during the course of a meeting? And, you know, my letter essentially says that, as a matter of order, it is a practice that's very disruptive. And, you know, my colleagues and I have been doing this work for a long time, and that's something that is, just as a matter of procedural order, really difficult to manage. It was my reading of the bylaws that it's really not something that should be occurring under your current bylaws, but that you could incorporate some language into your bylaws if you so choose to make it crystal clear. And I'll just read the language that I included in that letter as a possibility for the board to consider. It states, "A board member shall not be permitted to speak as a member of the public during any public comment periods except on a matter where the board member has recused himself or herself in order to assert or protect his or her personal interests or property rights." One thing I want to make clear is that it is very important for all members of the public and the board to be able to speak freely and voice personal concerns. And the letter also includes a statement that says, "The board members should be able to speak their minds from the board table." So in no way is my recommendation that there should be a limitation on a board member's ability to voice their concerns and personal opinions on matters on the agenda.
Thank you. The question is, do we vote to put this into Board of Selectmen bylaws?
I'll make a motion to do so with the language suggested by the town attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Yes, Mike?
Where would this be placed exactly? Does it matter? I mean, I know the recommendation is Section 11, but is there a specific quotation, just at the end of Section 11?
You know, I just, I was about to try and interject to address that issue. I actually think if you vote to incorporate it into the bylaws, I would create it as its own standalone section at the very end, because Section 11 talks about the public to address the board, and it doesn't quite fit with that topic. And I also think it will make it more clear that it applies both during regular agenda items and during the general public comment period, if it's a standalone item. So that would be section 24.
Thank you. Charlie?
First of all, with all due respect to Bernstein Show's municipal practice group and all of its years of experience, this practice had begun, I believe, in January one year ago, actually on January 10th of 2012. And I, as an individual, did not personally represent any disruption of procedure. So maybe you folks can use that as an example, contrary to your perception that this confuses the public. I also was never brought to anyone's attention that this confused the public or was disruptive. So I would like to have you add that to your base of experience, if you will, that for one year's time, this practice had continued. But I do want to thank you for clarifying what appears to be, was an error made by the chairman of the board at the time on January 10th in 2012, when I specifically asked if I could speak, and if you had had a chance to review the records I have, not the DVD, but the written record, I specifically asked the chair, should I recuse myself? It was Mr. Bruno at the time, so that I could speak under the public comment section. And Mr. Bruno spoke to the affirmative. So again, if there was confusion on anyone's part, it was probably on the part of the chair at the time. The other thing I, another comment I'd like to make is, your position, and I think it's the appropriate position, is predicated upon the fact that the selectmen have a role and their First Amendment rights are protected, because as you said, we have ample opportunity to speak and express our opinions here on this side of the table. And I think what I've seen since January 10th of 2012 is more of an erosion of individual rights. We're spending time tonight, in fact, trying to limit individual, whether it's a selectman or a member of the public, in essence, their ability to speak. So since we've spent time in doing that, I appreciate that we're now clarifying this and getting it into the record. The other point I think is very, very important in your decision, in your recommendation to the board, is that the public comment period, that is not a specific agenda item, that is on the agenda at the pleasure of the chair, because the chair also had a, we had a Selectman Communication section that was also on the agenda by pleasure of the chair, as is the public comment section. However, you have stated that, under the general public comment section, that is to be treated like any other agenda item.
In what way do you mean?
Well, while Section 11 deals specifically with agenda items, the same principles apply to the general comment period. So I'm assuming, since we don't want to be disruptive of procedure, that when a member of the public first addresses an issue and brings forth a concern or an issue for consideration of the board for future agenda items, that the board would have an opportunity, as they would be the sponsor of that inquiry, the board would have an opportunity to ask questions?
You mean, during the general public comment period?
Right.
If a person is speaking from here, would members of the board be able to ask questions?
Right.
And, I mean, I think that is up to the chair. The ability of the board members to speak about, you know, any items not already on the agenda is really in their ability to submit agenda items in advance to the chair for the next meeting or an upcoming meeting. So you have that opportunity to...
Well, maybe I can read what you've said, and then. Section 11 of the bylaws, public to address the board, states that, "Once an item has been introduced, there will be time devoted to any questions any board member may have, followed by public comment on the item, followed by the board's debate and vote. Each of these portions of discussions is separate and distinct, occurring in sequence, so that all parties can speak in an organized and efficient manner that facilitates the board's decision-making process." While Section 11 deals specifically with agenda items, the same principles apply to the general comment period.
Okay, yes, I agree.
So you understand?
I see what you're saying, and I think that's correct.
Very good.
I mean, obviously, the first portion where the board members have an opportunity to address the issue doesn't apply, because you don't know what the issue is until the public gets up. But to have an opportunity to respond thereafter does make sense. That is an interpretation of your bylaws, because it doesn't specifically say that. But that is, I agree.
So again, with that in mind, I am appreciative of the clarification, because Chairman Pro Tem, Mr. Reynolds, during one of our meetings, I believe it was two or three months ago, specifically said to the public, "You can get up, make your statements, and the board can ask questions."
Okay. You know, that's my take on it, but keep in mind, that item on your agendas is not a required item. So you just have to be careful.
And so you've actually made my point. Since we've spent an undue amount of time, even to the point at our last town meeting, we had a member of this board trying to limit the discussion to non-resident taxpayers to be able to speak at a town meeting by saying that even non-residents, but that included non-resident taxpayers. Again, I have seen a pattern of this board and this administration trying to limit public speech. And what I'd like to suggest as a friendly amendment to Mr. Bruno's amendment is that we also codify public comment within the bylaws of the Board of Selectmen. So we'll never, again, be left to the pleasure of the chair to be able to eliminate the ability of the public to bring concerns and issues before this board. And if I could get a second on that, I...
Do we have it?
I'd like to say a few things if I may. I think there's some misinterpretations here. Public comment is set up to bring attention to the Board of Selectmen for future agenda items, not to have a debate on what's brought up at that point. So it is then up to the board to decide whether or not what we hear from the public should be put on a future agenda item. That's what it's about. It's not to have a debate, because technically, you shouldn't be debating things that you never posted. So you did not post that agenda item, someone brought it up, you should not have a debate on that item, because it was not on the agenda. So you're being notified of something that people are asking to put on a future agenda. That's what public comment is about. As far as running a meeting, Robert's Rules are pretty clear about running an orderly meeting and what that means. And by a selectman getting from here to there and then coming back in a capacity as a selectman, that is not an orderly meeting. And I think that's what the opinion of the law firm is in this case, is saying, to run the meeting properly, you shouldn't, you have the right to free speech as a selectman, because you can address any item sitting here that's on the agenda, not what's not on the agenda. Your free speech rights, and there are many court cases nationally, and I'm sure if you wanted to pay the money to go research them, you can, about free speech and elected officials. You could have all the free speech you want when you walk out that door, and there are many ways to notify your constituents about, you can do mailings, you can call them, those are all within your free speech rights as a citizen. But when you're sitting here, you are here to run an orderly meeting under Robert's Rules, which is what our bylaws say. And that's why, you know, you can blame me all you want and say, "It's my fault, because I allowed it." I did allow it, because, you know, I thought we could have discussions. But then it got to the point where it was being abused. And so that bothered me, and that's why I made a point of order last meeting. The other thing about non-residents speaking at public meetings, that's in Robert's Rules, and I believe it might even be in statute, that non-residents have to have the permission of the town to speak. It's not me saying non-residents can't speak. That's in statute. If you're not a resident of a town at a town meeting, you do not have the right to speak. Most towns declare it at the first opening of any town meeting, that yes, we will allow non-residents to speak under unanimous consent of the body. That's just procedure. So, you know, if we want to define what public comment means and say, "It's limited to a discussion of future agenda items that the Board of Selectmen may address, but do not allow debate from the board to the public commenter," yeah, I'm fine with that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess what I just heard is, Mr. Bruno disagrees with the opinion of the attorney regarding Section 11 being germane to the public comment, that he contradicted himself, saying that it's supposed to limit discussion, but he thought it, he had to bring it up again, because he thought, when he proposed it, it was for discussion purposes. And the only reason why I brought up the town meeting aspect was, he's absolutely correct, and by a vote of the town, and appropriately by the people at the town meeting, we did allow non-resident taxpayers to speak at that meeting. However, in our bylaws, we don't, it says, "Any resident, taxpayer, or authorized representative." It doesn't say resident taxpayer. It says, "Resident, comma, taxpayer, or representative of an organization resident or taxpayer of the town of Raymond." So therefore, at these meetings, I would just, again, if we want to continue to spend money on legal counsel over this, I don't disagree with the counsel's opinion that, if acted on properly, and the respect is given of the First Amendment rights, both of the selectmen and the public, that we can handle these meetings, as we have always, without disruption and without confusion. And if we need to, we should probably, if we want to go further on a bylaws change in this case, for instance, taking up my suggestion that we codify in the bylaws that the public has a general comment section, and then we want to attach more bylaws, and I would suggest maybe we need to do some more homework on this before we go forward.
Page 112, 211, Road. My opinion is that, for the last year or so, there's been a concerted effort to silence Selectman Levitt. I think I've been, appeared before this board on a number of occasions discussing the fact that I do agree that any individual, selectman, town manager, public, that are disruptive, basically are controlled by the chair. And I believe I've made that point several times. So whether the idea is that someone was trying to be a good guy and hoped that someone else was going to correct their behavior, I have a little difficulty dealing with, as far as an organized board. Simply, the chair stating, "You're out of order," and a vote, if it's contested, would have ended this issue a long time ago. But what this board has decided to do is to slowly remove agenda items that I understand are not mandatory items. If I understand this issue, it was not just the disruptive issue, it was the fact that the selectmen have ample opportunity to speak at these meetings and to propose future agenda items. That was under, I believe, Selectman Communications. Chairman Bruno, when he was chair, removed that from the agenda. And that was done specifically...
Address that point.
That was done specifically to silence Selectman Levitt, when, in fact, to silence Selectman Levitt, all that the chair had to do was rule him out of order. And now, we're looking at limiting even more through public comment. And I believe the attempt on the part of Selectman Levitt is to say, "Well, I want to codify this in the bylaws, so that arbitrarily, the current chair will not remove the public comment section from the agenda," which I believe, at a previous meeting, the current chair said, "I will never do that."
Right, that's exactly what I said.
So, but I've heard a lot of things that aren't going to happen, that happen. So I guess my observation's of this, that speech is important, it needs to be protected. As I stated before, even inflammatory political rhetoric is protected speech, I believe. If it wasn't, the governor of this state would spend a lot of time in court. So that being the case, what happens when a selectman goes outside the door is protected speech. I guess I would say, even profanity aimed at another selectman after the cameras go off is protected speech. But I believe, if the ratcheting down by this board to the point where all that can be addressed has to be specifically on the agenda, that, in my opinion, would be an attempt to silence a selectman, a selectman that a certain number of voters of the town of Raymond put in that position. So although some may feel that I'm up here defending my brother, what I am defending is my vote, and the vote of any individual in this town who has cast for Selectman Levitt, because by gagging and silencing him, you are basically negating those votes. That's not democracy. Thank you.
There's no attempt, by the way, to gag and silence Selectman Levitt.
Yeah, I think the point of this is, we're trying to run a meeting under Robert's Rules. That's what we're doing. Any selectman has the right to request an item be placed on the agenda, and the chairman can make the decision of whether or not that item is placed on the agenda. And then you can have a discussion about any of those items. This whole idea that I remove selectman comment, well, I'm the one who put it there in the first place.
Sure.
So, you know, all I'm trying to do is bring simility back to this board, that we address items on the agenda, have proper discussions, and stop this inflammatory speech that happens. And, you know, I'm just as much at fault, and I will admit it, for taking the bait many times. But you know what? I'm pretty sure that Robert's Rules are clear on how to run a meeting. I've done it for many, many years, and I just think these, this pieces of adding to the, to the bylaws of the Selectmen clears things up for us. And that's all I'm asking to do.
Thank you. Mike? You got Mike? Mike?
Mike. Last meeting, to say the least, was a little uncomfortable at the end. I rewatched the video. I left here in a quandary. I have supported anybody's ability to go up there and speak their mind. I think Charlie alluded to the fact that I don't allow the board to comment back, because I'm looking for comments from the public. I have felt, based on my reading of Robert's Rules, that the public comment is to suggest things for the future, bring things up we may not know. But because we do not know what's going to be said up there, and we cannot prepare for that, that I don't want to enter into discussions without all the facts. And I don't think it's fair to put staff in that position or to put us in that position. That is why, when I was chair, two times ago, that I did not allow it, and why, a couple of months ago, when I had to step in, I had the same rules as I had had previously. When I was chair, I did not have selectman comment on my agenda. Agenda items were emailed to me, were called into me, were called into the town manager, we put them in a queue, and if we got enough interest in an agenda item, I brought it forth. When I left my chairmanship after two years, there were items in the queue that never came forward. It was my choice, I was chair. And I feel that was the way it was done. I think Joe handled it much the same, but I think when Sam came in, he made it a little more formal. He asked us specifically in writing to write to him with agenda items. And from my standpoint, I sit here as a select board member. I do not have the ability to do selectman comment like I used to, off the cuff, at a whim. But when I want to talk about the library, and there are library folks here tonight, I write the chairman, I ask it to be put on. If the chairman feels that it should be put on, it is. We're a five-member board elected, I'm sure that every request Sam gets does not end up on the agenda. If one person says it, he doesn't feel it's worth our time, he doesn't put it on. Not everybody's ideas get put on the agenda. I understand that. I'm one of five. But I have been supportive of Selectman Levitt going up and saying his piece, as much as I may cringe sometimes. However, at the last meeting, I changed my mind. I called my personal lawyer, because, you know, Sean is our town lawyer. I left here that night flabbergasted, embarrassed, and I didn't know how to respond to it. So I called my own personal lawyer, and I asked him to look into it. He told me that there were no issues with how I voted one way or another, what I thought about it one way or another, or what the chair did with it one way or another. I mean, that is the chair's discretion, that's why we elected chair. So I come here tonight feeling a little easier about this. I think whether we vote this into the bylaws or not, I think there are key parts in our bylaws that allow us to address this very issue. But what I did find out, when I did my research, and I appreciate everybody giving me this time, I've been going for years, and I don't know, it's my second copy, Louise, thank you for this one, because the one I had before went away from previous boards. Louise got me that eight or nine years ago, when I first got on the board. It's just the simple brief. So I went and did some research, because recusal is what we were dealing with here, right? A board member recused himself from the board to go up and speak as a member of the public. And I always felt that was a justified reason to switch from here to there. My research of recusal, first of all, there's nothing in our bylaws that uses the word. There's nothing in this small book that uses the word. So I went. 11th edition of Robert's Rules of Order, page 407. 11th edition of Robert's Rules of Order, page 407. "To recuse oneself means to remove oneself from participation in a decision so to avoid conflict of interest." That is recusal under Robert's Rules of Order. If a member accuses himself, they leave the chamber. That's when my opinion changed on the ability for a board member to go from here to there if something is going to be voted on. You're allowed to go from here to there to speak your mind on an agenda item, then you must leave the premises for a discussion and vote to take place so that you are not influencing those people you sit with. So I'm no longer in agreement that a select board member can go up there and speak during public comment. Okay? I do think that board members have the ability to put an agenda item through the chair and speak on whatever they want. Members of the public, that's your time. We, when we sit here and represent you as elected officials, are not members of the public anymore for that two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour period. So whether we vote for this or not, it doesn't clarify whether you can go up there or not. I think what clarifies that is Robert's rules, and whether or not it's a, you're accusing for a decision to avoid a conflict of interest. That's not what's been going on. And that's my two cents to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Yes?
Steve Laney, 66 Muston Road. Normally, I sit at home in the comfort of my couch. However, after the last meeting, I had to come in and address this group. And I really want to bring up the issue of transparency. What's been going on over the last year, I see, is an erosion of the transparency of the town of Raymond's governance. What I'm seeing is, it's getting worse. Now, this is, and I want to make it clear, this is my perception. And this is a perception that this board is, in fact, giving to the citizens of this town. And one thing about perception is, it's far more damaging than reality. So this move and passing this change to the bylaws is one more blocking of transparency. It makes us wonder what deals are going on in the background, what are background, you know, what is being hidden? That's the first thing that comes to my mind. Probably nothing, but that's my perception. So I really think the board needs to think about this. What are you really doing, and what is the perception going to be to the residents of the town of Raymond? Thank you.
Thank you. Dana, did you have something?
No, I'm just watching.
Teresa?
Teresa Sadek, Webb's Mills Road. I think my big issue is public comment. When I got on the school board, it was, you had to have seven days' notice to have something on an agenda item. So everybody, every party, anybody that was mentioned, has time to either attend it, speak for them, you know, prepare, you know, whatever defense they have or whatever. These meetings are getting to the point where we've got a selectman that comes up and bad mouse, I'm going to say, I'm trying to think of the right words here, bad mouse, other people, and the selectman. And that's not productive. And I don't think that's what public comment is for. And so what happens is, if we've got an issue, like I said to you, like at the last meeting or the meeting before, you've got an issue, go through the proper channels. But when you've got somebody that we have elected as a board to stand, to work together, walks around, comes around, and talks about different things that's happening in the public, and because they don't agree with something, it's not okay. That's not public comment. That's taking their public right and abusing it. And I do think, I do think that everybody should have a say. In this case, like you said about the library, people should be able to stand up here and go, "Okay, this is what happened in the high schools." You know what I mean? I just want to put a word out there. This is supposed to be something good, I think, up here. Or say, "Can I address a letter?" Everybody has email, everybody has the phone numbers to the town halls. If somebody wants to put something on the agenda, Sam's got it. I know I've sent you just a couple of things, just thoughts, you know, as far as whatever. But standing up here and using it as a bashing session from a selectman or any public official at any meeting is not okay. And I think it is an absolute abuse of power.
Thank you. Yes? Ms. Soler.
My name's Julie Sutherland. I live at 51 Ledge Hill Road in Raymond. I was at the last meeting, was completely appalled by the disrespect. There are steps to be able to put it on the agenda, and I, for one, have gone through all the steps, with phone calls, the letters, the emails, and what I want to, I've even asked for a private meeting with the board to discuss something that I do not want to put on air because of respect for other people. And it hasn't been happening. When Charlie Levitt excused himself last week, it was during public comment at the last meeting. There was not a vote. It was a public comment time, when he wanted to speak. As a resident, as this town, as a taxpayer, he had that right, under the Constitution of freedom of speech. He's a human being, and a resident of the town. Yes, he is a voting member. But to shut him down during a public comment, when there was no voting going on, it looked like a dictatorship. We live in the USA, not a dictator that rules this area. Wasn't happy by a couple of the members. And especially the way that a lot of discrimination has been happening to certain board members and to certain members of the public when they want to speak about certain items. I've talked to several lawyers, including our lawyer. Freedom of speech is a very strong issue. And I see it was broken very highly and very strongly and very disrespectful at the last meeting.
Thank you. Yes, Teresa?
Just to, so we can put it all a little bit in perspective again, I agree with the council's opinion regarding not confusing and bleeding over into the public comment section as long as the rights are preserved for the selectmen for free speech. So to address the issue of agenda items, and no offense to the library, because I see the library is, again, on tonight's agenda, and it was on last month's agenda. Over the past year, I have asked for an agenda item to restore selectman communications, and I was refused. I asked for an agenda item for a policy on employee use of facilities and vehicles. I was refused. And I think tonight, we will all see the example of, when I asked for a agenda item on public safety and communications in North Raymond, it took nearly four months. And when it was presented to us, a point of order was raised to try to prevent that even from going forward when it was an agenda item. So again, for historical perspective, and about preserving the right of a selectman, and using the largesse of the chair in order to restrict by having the only say as to what goes on the agenda, I would think, and these are just three items that have come to mind. I believe if I went through my records, I would probably find several more. So again, just so the public understands that the council has said, as long as the rights of a selectman are preserved, and in fact, is not at the, and I think the word whim was used, as a description of someone who might go up and at a whim want to speak at public comment, at the whim of the chair is extremely, and I think the other Mr. Levitt has referred to that. The chair of a board has two aces in the hole at all times, and controls what speech is allowed or what goes on the agenda. And if anybody would say that a policy on employee use of facilities and vehicles or public safety communications aren't important agenda items that were brought forward and denied, is an expression of open discussion, I'd like to hear the rebuttal.
Yes?
There's an utter lack of understanding of parliamentary procedure being thrown out there. The chair is a very powerful person under Robert's rules, and has the ability to deny putting an item on an agenda. The second thing is, if an item has been previously discussed by the board, under parliamentary rules, you don't bring it up again until a new board is elected. That is parliamentary procedure. So the fact that there are requests to put items on the agenda that were previously discussed, that's just normal parliamentary procedure to deny those requests because they've already been discussed. It's not a matter of free speech at that point. It's trying to run the meeting efficiently, keep it moving along, and not going over the same thing over and over again. You elect a chairman. This board elects a chairman, and that chairman has power. Whether you like what that chairman does or not, that's too bad. He's been elected by the other members of the board. You have not voted for any chairman that's been elected so far. So, yeah, of course you're going to disagree with them. But the chairman has enormous power to set the agenda. That's the role of the chairman. And whether or not you like it or not, you know, if you want to be chairman, then what you do is you get people who think like you to become chairman.
Just a point of information, I voted for Mr. Gifford as chairman.
Oh, I don't think so.
If you want to check the record, I voted for Mr. Gifford.
Yes?
One short clarification. Sometimes requests are made from the public, Ms. Sutherland alluded to that point, and they're not appropriate under law or policy. And so in the case of your particular request, that was the case. And you have received a written reply from the town office instructing you on the proper procedure to do what it is you want to do, to make the point you want to make. And so I would encourage you to do that, to submit. And I rendered a decision, and then there was an appeal from that. But your request was not an order. It was something legally we cannot do. So I just want to make that clarification.
Well, where are we? Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second.
I just got one question. So as a board member wants to speak his or her piece, they would need to recuse themselves from the board and go up to the mic?
No.
Well, a board member shall not be permitted to speak as a member of the public during any public comments, comment periods, except on a matter where the board member has recused himself or herself in order to assert or protect his or her personal interest or property rights.
That means they have, there's a conflict of interest, that they're being challenged on an agenda item that personally affects them. They must recuse themselves from the board, sit out in the public, and then they can address the board as a public member, if I'm correct.
That's what this proposed language says. I think selectman Reynolds was talking about, you may want to clarify your earlier comments because I think it's not quite consistent. So I want to make sure the whole board understands what the amendment is saying. I think selectman Reynolds said something like, if the, if there's a recusal, whether or not that member could speak as a member of the public, they would have to remove themselves from the chamber for deliberations and voting. Is that, okay?
I didn't go into reading the entire page here, but Shaun is correct that to recuse oneself, you would leave the board, sit in the public, say your piece on an agenda item because it would have, what was it, to avoid conflict of interest, which gets into personal property. But once you've done it because you're a member of the board, then you have to remove yourself from the chamber after you've spoken on a specific item so that you're not in proximity to the other board members during the discussion or the voting. I left out the middle part, I apologize.
No, it's good clarification, I think.
Yes, Teresa?
So I'd like to ask counsel then, going back to Mr. Bruno's statement, is this recusal, and I think where Mr. Taylor's going with this is, Mr. Bruno is saying, if you recuse himself or herself in order to assert or protect his or her personal interests, you're saying that's only, or Mr. Bruno's interpretation is, for conflict of interest? I don't see that, I don't see that connection. I see conflict of interest as a separate item. I see recusal in order to assert, and this is where probably Mr. Taylor's going, to assert or protect?
So, selectman Reynolds is talking about, Robert's Rules of Orders, about general recusal, not about recusal for the specific purpose of being able to speak to the board as a member of the public. Conflict of interest is an appropriate and necessary time to recuse oneself as a board member from the deliberations and voting on a particular item. The language I drafted for the board's consideration of the bylaws is focused on predicting when such a recusal would then lend itself to that particular board member speaking as a member of the public on that item. So you can have a conflict of interest because it's a close family member that's coming to the board requesting something, and you leave the premises. But if it's affecting you and you feel you need to speak as a member of the public on that item, this would allow you to do that, but then, you know, under Robert's Rules of Orders, you need to not be present for the rest of that deliberation and vote.
Thank you. Any other comments?
If I may, just to expand on that, though, the, so if I want to, if I, the way this is worded, I'm not saying I'm in favor of this, I'm just saying we need to clarify this, that if I feel as though my First Amendment right is not being protected, I don't feel as though I have a conflict of interest. However, the way I read this, I could recuse myself because I need to protect my right, my First Amendment right. Well, the way it's worded, I'm not saying that's, and I think this is an area that makes this issue not gray, because again, I am not advocating for a member of this board to have to use the public comment section to stand up and protect or assert their rights. But if it becomes a matter, I don't see that as a conflict of interest. I see that as, the way this is worded, is that I, any member of the board would be recusing themselves in order to protect their personal interest.
When a board, this assumes that a board member needs to recuse him or herself because there's a conflict of interest. In some subset of those circumstances, that board member may want to assert or protect personal interests or property rights. So that's the way to explain it.
Right. This is not about your First Amendment rights at all. That's a totally separate issue, and has nothing to do with this board.
That's correct. Any board in the world has rules.
No, it's, any constitutional item is, has an impact on any decision-making on any board.
But there is case law out there, and you can do the research yourself.
I have done the research. I've had my own attorneys, and that's why I am sitting here saying that I am not advocating that as long as the selectmen's rights are protected as such, there is no need, and probably would be, I might not use the word inappropriate, but that was the word, that it's inappropriate to have to use the vehicle of public comment. That's-
Moved and seconded?
Yep.
All in favor? Yes? Opposed? Opposed? I'm sorry, Shaun.
There you go.
Okay, on to the next item. Consideration of solid waste, tax flow control ordinance, and review for compliance with MMWAC obligations. Joe Kazar, executive director of MMWAC. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm- Joe Kazar, I'm the executive director of MMWAC, the MidMaine Waste Action Corporation. For those who aren't familiar with MMWAC, I have a brief presentation that could give you some of the background on our organization. And for those that do know us, we'll go over a few things that are coming up that we need to deal with. So- So, this will be a report to Raymond tonight. We do have a website that I have listed here, and also a way to get general mail to us. By way of background, MMWAC was formed in 1986 by Raymond and 11 other communities who banded together to form a corporation through an intermunicipal agreement. That led to the construction of our facility, which was built in 1992. We are the fourth and the latest waste-to-energy plant in Maine. And waste energy, by that we mean taking municipal solid waste, household garbage, and converting it into electricity and inert ash. We're a quasi-municipal corporation, and so we operate under many of the same laws and regulations that a town would. We first and foremost provide dependable waste disposal, and we do so in a way that protects the health and the environment. The members have made a big investment in MMWAC, and a big part of our job is to protect that. And we also feel strongly that with solid waste, we're managing that as a resource and not as something other than that. This is our scale. All of our customers weigh up for billing purposes. The primary activity is to operate a 200-ton-a-day waste-to-energy facility. We also operate a transfer station, and we conduct some recycling on-site. But it's waste-to-energy that's really fundamental to what we do. Tipping fees are the charges that would apply when a customer or a member brings waste to us for processing. And you'll see that there's a whole variety of tipping fees depending on who the customer might be. The members, and when I say a member, I'm talking about Raymond and the other 11 towns that formed and own MMWAC, are paying the lowest rate, $29 a ton. This is well under any normal tipping fee, and it's in recognition in part for the heavy debt load that you've assumed. Also, if there's commercial waste coming out of a member town, that's also discounted. We then have contracts with other communities who don't own MMWAC. You'll see that they're paying higher amounts. And then finally, the private haulers who pay the top rate. This is a picture of our waste-energy facility. You see one of the trucks discharging its load. And here we have a cross-section of the mass burn process that we utilize. A truck would come, it's called mass burn because the truck would collect waste from the community or from businesses, dump the waste into a pit, it's a low-grade pit about 30 feet down. We can hold about 600 to 1,200 tons of trash in there, that's our fuel. And then it's lifted up with a crane and put into a chute, and then goes through the combustor where, over the course of about 30 or 40 minutes, it's converted from raw garbage to inert ash. We burn at about a 1,700 to 1,800-degree temperature, and that hot gas which leaves the combustor then goes into the boiler section to produce a superheated steam that in turn goes to a turbine generator to make electricity, hence waste-to-energy. And then finally, the gases which have given up most of their heat go into the air pollution train before they're exhausted to the atmosphere. In general, most, a family of three would generate about a ton of municipal solid waste per year, and we have the capability and typically process about 70,000 tons in a year. So, over the last 20 years, well-told, we're about 1.4 million tons that we've processed in our plant. This would be a picture of our pit. This is where that truck would have been dumping. And that's a crane that picks up about one ton of trash at a time to feed into the units. It's a highly automated facility. While we have hundreds of different pumps and motors and switches and different controls, they can all be operated by one operator with this computer system. So it's really quite a modern marvel. Now, you saw the pit, hundreds of tons of trash, summertime, it must generate awful odors. We're close to a residential area, and in the 20 years that we've been operating, we've never had an odor complaint. And a big reason for that is the air that we use for combustion. This would be a large motor fan that would draw in air from the pit and then bring that into the combustor for combustion air where the odors are then destroyed. So we keep the whole building under a negative pressure because of all the air that we need, and then we get the efficient burn. This is a picture of the combustor itself. This is where the trash is combusted, and this is while it was being fabricated in France about 1990. Real rugged piece of machinery. But because we burn at such hot temperatures, we have about nine inches of refractory within this combustor to protect the unit from actually oxidizing. The hot temperatures would destroy this in a matter of weeks if it weren't for the refractory. Electricity, we generate a fair amount, and it might come as some surprise, but almost all of the energy that we get from the solid waste comes from the garbage itself. We don't cook the garbage with natural gas or fuel oil or anything like that. It's really a self-sufficient process. And we generate enough power to serve the needs of about 2,000 homes. This is a picture of our boiler complex. Mercury, that was a home run for MMWAC in terms of environmental improvement. We don't add any mercury to the process, but because of consumer products like this, there is a fair amount of mercury that was going into the waste stream. And fortunately, a lot of these things are no longer being sold, or if they are, the mercury has been reduced. The biggest source of mercury in municipal waste combustors was alkaline batteries. And the industry, with a lot of pressure from government and citizens, reduced the amount of mercury that went into these, so it cut the mercury input by a lot. Then novelty items are no longer sold with mercury switches like these shoes. Thermometers no longer use mercury. So on and on, we have a reduction in mercury in the waste stream. But also, we installed a mercury control system that uses activated carbon. And because of that, our emissions on mercury, which we measure through stack testing, went from 500 pounds a year down to less than one pound a year. So, the process, which is a clean process to begin with, got even better. EPA has been very supportive of waste energy. We're a net reducer on greenhouse gases, and EPA is on record as saying that electricity from plants like ours have fewer environmental impacts than almost any other source of electricity. So it's really quite a green way to handle trash and generate power. This would be the tail end of the plant where we have our baghouse, our monitoring computers and testing equipment, and lime silo, all for environmental control. This is an example of a filter bag. We use about 800 of these to filter out even the most minute particles. So if you go by MMWAC when we're in operation, typically, you won't see anything coming out of the stack. And if you do, it'll be a white plume. It won't be smoke, it's water vapor from our air pollution equipment. And that's due to the advanced equipment that we've got. We also have a partnership with a non-owner, municipality Lewiston, who has built a special landfill to take our ash and in return sends the trash. So it's basically a trade. They send trash, we send them inert ash. And you saw the pit and the garbage that was in there. At the end of the process, this is what's left, a sterile inert ash, and then we also filter out metal that we can recycle. This slide shows Lewiston when they were building one of their initial cells. First, you get the site ready and shape it. You then put in heavy, thick, impermeable liners to capture any of the dirty water, any of the leachate that might be created when it rains, and separate that from the groundwater. One of the great things about waste energy is that we reduce the amount of landfills that are needed by 90%. There's a 90% volume reduction. So, in our 20 years, we've processed about 1.5 million tons of trash. This has saved 2.5 million cubic yards of landfill space. But to put that in perspective, if we had a football stadium, that trash would be about 1,200 feet tall. So, MMWAC, while it's a small plant, I think has done a good job to help prolong landfill life in the area. We also offset the need for other fossil fuels that might be needed for the electricity. This is our metal recycling area, and believe it or not, people are putting stuff like this in the trash. And after the incineration process, we take it out again and recycle it. The waste management hierarchy is something that we're real concerned about. There is state law and state policy that puts waste-to-energy ahead of landfilling, but to date, the state has not been very aggressive about promoting that. We do send out these reports each month to the town of Raymond and our other members. We hope that it answers any questions you might have about our operation. We try and be transparent and tell you everything's going on financially and otherwise with the corporation. Raymond, as a member, has a certain proportionate ownership share of MMWAC. So, our Table 1 will show each of the communities and then show the relative amount of trash that's been delivered from that facility since the, from that town since the facility opened. So in Raymond's case, it's between 5% and 6% ownership share of MMWAC. Now, next steps, and getting real quickly to the waste handling agreement, we have an energy contract that will be expiring at the end of the year. So, one of our missions right now is to have a plan for a new energy sales agreement, and we'll be bidding out on the wholesale market initially. And longer term, there might be other options for our energy. Next would be the waste management hierarchy. We want to work with the state to try and get a little better treatment for waste-to-energy so that landfills aren't getting first crack at the trash, that they go to waste-to-energy first, and only when the waste-energy plants can't take anymore should it go to a landfill. Another policy issue that we would hope the state and federal government would help on is renewable energy credits. When you're a renewable energy source like waste-to-energy, you get, you can sell your power, but you get some additional income from renewable energy credits because this is domestic renewable energy. And right now, we get a mere 10% of what a biomass or a hydro plant would get, or a windmill, a wind farm. The debt that our owners have taken on from the original mortgage at MMWAC is just about ready to be paid off. In November of '14, most of the towns will have made their final installment. So, that's a day to look forward to, and that should be a time when ownership dividends become more apparent. Also, the board has been very good in terms of insisting that we have a good reserve. And over the years, we've been very careful about our expenditures, and we have built up and maintained a $5 million reserve. That's going to be very important because the market is very competitive right now with the recession. While it may not be apparent to people, the recession even hits garbage production. People aren't generating as much, stores aren't throwing out as much, they're not selling as much. And so, it's had a, it's had an impact on the industry, a lot more competition. And then in addition, wholesale power is not, you're not getting what you used to for that. So, this reserve is going to be helpful to MMWAC as we, you know, weather this recession that we're in. And then lastly, we want to work with our 12 members to amend and extend the waste Now, the waste handling agreement, by way of background, I mentioned that Raymond and 11 partner towns formed MMWAC in '86. You did that by entering into an intermunicipal agreement with one another, and that set up MMWAC, and it also set up the ground rules under which my board would operate. It also contains a provision so that each of the communities needed to have in place a waste handling agreement. Now, the waste handling agreement very simply requires MMWAC to take your trash, process it, and turn it into energy in a safe way. But it also requires each of the towns to make sure that the waste comes to MMWAC. The intermunicipal agreement also has a provision where a member can withdraw from MMWAC. There's a procedure to do that if one of our members wished to. So there's two conflicts that we want to solve, we want to resolve by way of an amendment to the waste handling agreement. One is the expiration date. The intermunicipal agreement expires May 1 of 2035. A long ways off, but it also has provisions on dissolving MMWAC if the board wanted to do it, or for a member to leave, or for a new member to be brought in. The waste handling agreement, on the other hand, expires at the end of this year. So we have a disconnect there. The intermunicipal agreement requires each of the towns to have a waste handling agreement, but it's going to expire. So number one, we'd like to amend the waste handling agreement so it has the same expiration date of May 1, 2035. The other thing is the ability to withdraw from MMWAC, as I indicated, was in the intermunicipal agreement. You only need to give one year's notice from the end of a fiscal year. On the other hand, the waste handling agreement did not have any provision for terminating it. So, what we are suggesting is that at your 2013 town meeting, and we had a recent board meeting where there was a unanimous vote to recommend this to each of the towns, at your 2013 town meeting, we're asking that you consider authorizing the execution of an amended waste handling agreement. It'll cure these two problems, will have expiration dates that are the same, and will also have a provision in the waste handling agreement which would be very similar to what's in the interlocal agreement so that if a town decided that it wanted to withdraw from MMWAC, it could do so. It could terminate the waste handling agreement. This is the actual language of the amendment that we're proposing. It's very simple and short. It would delete all of Article 10, which is the term of the agreement section, and Article 10 right now talks about termination would be 24 years after the initial financing, and that brings us up to 123113. And instead, we would have the new expiration date, May 1, 2035, and the provision for the one-year termination notice. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions, but we hope that this housekeeping matter is something that you would agree to consider at your town meeting. I've given Don, your town manager, a packet that includes the amendment language. There's a letter from me which reiterates this, and there's also a suggested warrant that you might want to look at and see if that fits your needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I would just like to make a comment. I've had an opportunity for the last two years and the privilege as an elected member of this board and assigned to the MMWAC representative for the town of Raymond, and I've been nothing but impressed with the operational, both on the ground, and as a former boiler maker by trade, I'm very observant of the operation of a facility such as this nature, and I've been in facilities much larger than this before, and I continue to be impressed by the dedication and the environmental, as well as the management, financial management of the corporation. And I would defer to Mr. Willard's experience on these, but I think the, whatever board it was in 1986 that had the foresight, after maybe missing the boat with the EcoMaine land deal, which fortunately will be out of that shortly, had the foresight to enter into this agreement, and it's given Raymond an option, not only for now, but in the event in the future. We have other agreements for handling our recycling and waste also beyond the municipal solid waste. And as MidMaine Waste maintains its health as a corporation, and that's important to the town because we're a member of that corporation, that it may also give us some avenues to explore in the future.
Don?
Or, beg your pardon?
Ralph?
Ralph?
Whatever you want.
Joe?
Joe, I wanted to start by saying my family's from Winston Auburn, and as they have aged, I get the privilege of coming to your facility more often than I would have thought I needed to, but it's clean, it's easy to get around, your folks are helpful. to, but it's clean, it's easy to get around, your folks are helpful. So I think from a consumer standpoint, it's always been an easy in and out and operation, and you should be proud of that as well.
Thank you. You'll pass that on to the staff.
I guess my only question for you is, you know, we're reaching, you know, a few years of operation here, you know, and you look towards 35. Anything the town can expect for a major expenditure? I know you mentioned the $5 million reserve, but I mean, is there a retooling coming up? Do you think you're going to have to replace a boiler? Is there scheduled maintenance that we should be aware of that we may have to put into long-range planning to help pay for, or what's the operation till 35 if everything goes well?
At this point, we don't have any single large item that we're really concerned about. Some of the bigger project, what we do is twice-a-year outages for one week where both units come down, once in April and once in October. And we bring in, we have our staff, of course, but we bring in a lot of contractors to help us get through that week and get back online as soon as possible. And we do all of our major maintenance at that time. So, you know, basically, the facility is built out of metal. There's a lot of erosion and corrosion, and so you're constantly replacing those parts that have worn out or corroded. But we're able to maintain the larger pieces of equipment that way by literally often cutting out pieces of metal and putting in new refractory. Obviously, there's motors and pumps that change out periodically. The biggest jobs that we've done recently have been, you remember the combustor, that double-walled cylinder that I pointed out? Well, that weighs about 200 tons with all the refractory that's in it, and it rides on real heavy-duty trunnion bearings. And the trunnion bearings ride on a huge cast tire, we call it. And they had lasted about six, one of them 16 years, the other one's still going, but we replaced a whole tire. That was a big job, but it was on the order of a couple hundred thousand per tire, which we can deal with on an annual basis. So I guess the short answer is I don't see entire combustor replacements at any time in the near future. What we're more concerned about is the electric market. Natural gas is unbelievably cheap, and so that's changed how fossil fuel generators are making power now. The coal and the oil have pretty much been put on the back burner, and gas is the way to go. It's caused wholesale prices to go down. So that's going to be a challenge for us. And the other would be the hierarchy that I talked about and whether or not we're going to have to continue to compete with landfills. You saw what we have, the environmental attention. It's expensive to run. Landfills are a lot cheaper. And so we would like the state to be a little more helpful in terms of supporting this industry by making waste to energy truly the preferred method so that companies aren't allowed to use up, say, the state landfill in preference to waste to energy. Those are policy things that would be helpful for us.
Don?
I would suggest that we, as a staff, take a look at this material, move it forward through the process, get this back to the Board of Selectmen as soon as possible so that it could be voted upon by the board, included in the town meeting warrant. I would tell you, I would concur with Mr. Levitt's comments and Mr. Reynolds' comments. In my career, I predate the plant, and I was a member of the Committee to Analyze Perk. I was on the perk plant board, and two things I remember were, that plant will never make it because it's too small and it's some kind of wacky foreign technology. It's never going to make it. And I remember when I first came, I went over on a tour with you, and I was impressed, as Mr. Levitt's been impressed, with how you run it and how well you maintain it, how well it's performed, and how you aren't coming back to the towns every two years and looking for more money from us, which has been the history of the other plants. And so I would commend you for all of that.
Thanks. And the board's been real clear that that's how they wanted me to behave.
And just to add to that, we've actually received dividends from the corporation in return in the good years.
In good years, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question.
Yes.
You're also a bulky waste facility?
We do have a transfer station.
So residents of Raymond can bring bulky waste to your facility?
Yes, they can. We charge on a per-ton basis.
Right.
Yeah, it's about a nickel a pound.
Yeah, so residents out there who are looking for options, we have one in Casco, but they can also go to your plant.
Yes, and our website's easy to find, midmainwaste.com, and you'll find a lot of details there about when we're open, how to find us, what we charge, those sorts of things.
And I was at the town meeting where this got approved, and it was a contentious fight, believe it or not, whether or not Raymond wanted to take on all that debt.
Well, the early years were very tough.
And it was a very close vote to pass it.
And the other thing I remember is we signed on for something like 12 bucks a ton, and people looked at that 29 and said, geez, that's crazy money. That kind of, well, maybe it wasn't 29, but it was more. But of course, it wasn't very long before the plant, perk plant, you know, what happened there to the tip fees and everything, and so it turned out to be smart money for the towns who signed on with you.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you again. Next item, consideration of use of public property for 2013 Annual Sebago Lake Rotary Club Ice Derby Fest. Wingo Hartig is the organizer and the speaker.
Good evening. My name is Wingo Hartig. I live on 21 Oakledge Road in Raymond, and I would like to apply for permit for a fishing derby this year, and I would like to introduce to you Mr. Steve McCarland, our president, Rotary president. Thank you.
Thank you, Wingo. It's a pleasure to be in front of the board. Thank you very much for our consideration. Would it be helpful to the board just to kind of get a summary of planning on the derby so far, or what's your pleasure, folks?
Yes, a quick summary would be good.
Quick summary. I'll keep it as quick as I can.
Appreciate you mentioning the beer addition.
Yep. I certainly will. Well, we're very excited. I think we're feeling that things are going very well right now. I think the way we're measuring that is the interest we're starting to get. I think what I'd like to do is I'll pass around one of our advertisements that's coming out, and you'll see a lot of the stuff that we're doing there. What's the best way to? Most everything now goes through our webpage, icefishingderby.com. Month of December, two months ahead of the event, we had over 1,200 different people come to our site looking for information and seemingly getting very excited about this. So Weatherman says cold next week, so ice is on the way. But it really doesn't matter because this year, we've instituted the Cumberland County Ice Fishing Derby as well. Fish any legal lake or pond in Cumberland County, separate prize pool for that, and so I think it's going to add a little intrigue, number one, to the derby. Number two, if Sebago doesn't freeze, no problem. We just tell people to go fish any other lake or pond. All those prizes will still be awarded, so hopefully that'll add some fun. Hundred thousand dollar prize, again, for catching a state-record toge on Sebago Lake. We've got our 30 Days of Derby promotion, where we've got a whole lot of contributions, donations from local businesses, restaurants, places like that. And starting January 17th, every day for everyone registered, they qualify for that day's drawing, we're going to give over $100 worth of gift certificates each day up until Derby, which is 16th and 17th of February. New this year, we've got a gift card program. We're still working on it, but it's a gift card, $25 gift cards to be used in Wyndham and Raymond only. So that's designed, again, to drive business to the local area, get people to come back to the region perhaps later on in the year. We're still working out the details of that. And to pull it off, we need a few more sponsors, so if you know of anyone, please send them our way, accept any contributions there. And I do need to recognize our big sponsor. We've got a lot of support here, but Kidery Trading Post is with us every year. Big Apple Food Stores came on last year, and despite cancellation are pleased with just the structure of it, so they'll be back. Portland Press Herald, Main Sunday Telegram, Oxford Casinos, another new sponsor in a big way. We have awarded the town of Raymond a bronze sponsorship for all the support that we get for, you know, fire safety, public safety, and all of that. Town of Wyndham has been very kind to us in promoting the local marketing and 30 Days of Derby events. And if you really want to increase to a silver sponsorship, we'd be happy to discuss that too along the way. We are applying for a liquor permit. We do have probably only two or three, perhaps, beer vendors. We're going to keep it very simple. It's not going to get out of control. Our idea is to set up the tent on the ice, and so that is in addition to the application. Yep.
Clarification on that point. We had this discussion a few years ago, and I think we determined, in working with the state of Maine, correct me if I'm wrong on this, that that use of the beer tent, if you will, off of the land of the town of Raymond, over the frozen waters of the state of Maine would be jurisdictional from the state of Maine, not the town, although we would have to sign the permit, but it would be over lands, submerged lands of the state of Maine.
I believe that's true. We will clarify that.
We're going to, of course, as we normally do with our planning meeting, we want to ensure that you have and you will have, obviously, as you always do, the proper insurances and the coverages to protect the town, indemnify the town, and we'll have our pre-event emergency planning meeting.
Yep.
The Chief Tupper has sponsored the last several years, so the Selectmen can be assured that all the public safety elements will be addressed. And so I guess under that scenario, I think it's different than what was originally proposed a number of years ago and was turned down by the town, which was the tents on the beach area, if I recall. So I wanted to make sure the Selectmen were aware of that difference.
Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
That's about it. You know, again, icefishingderby.com, a lot of great information out there. You'll start to see a whole lot of promotion of this event, and ultimately, we're raising money for charity. That's what Rotary does, so.
And 3,000 people, roughly.
In good years, yes.
Right.
Good years, yes, yeah. Polar Ice Dip raises over $100,000 alone for the children's cancer program, and, you know, it's a great event, brings a lot of people to the region during a slow time of year, and again, looking forward to putting on a good event. And I do want to just recognize Tom Noonan, who's done it for a lot of years. Tom is stepping aside for a year from Rotary, taking a year's leave of absence, and stepping into those shoes, realizing what an amazing job he did for all those years. And so next time you see Tom, pat on the back for that because I'm having a hard time keeping up with it, but we're doing it, so.
Great, thank you. Questions?
Is there a fee for the liquor license?
Louise?
It depends on how we receive it. If it turns out to be like a catering license, then it would be $10 fee. If it is a state liquor license, like a restaurant would have, then there is no, I'm sorry, there is a $10 fee, but most of the fee would be to the state.
So I will make a motion to approve the application for the ice fishing derby, and I would also ask that the town waive any fees for the liquor license.
It's moved. Looking for a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Why do you want to waive the fee? Not a good fee.
Maybe he'll make us a silver sponsor at that point.
No, I don't. I think what he's saying is, he's saying, even though we didn't give you any money, we gave you an in-kind contribution, so you recognized us with the sponsorship.
Absolutely.
But what we like is a gold membership in your checking account. So in the past, the Derby, I joke, but the Derby in the past has given us some things, and we've worked together on those improvements, and so I look forward to doing that in the future. Our favorite charity is the town of Raymond.
Absolutely.
Moved and seconded, yes.
I'm just thinking, it brings so much business to the area.
Oh, yes.
That, you know, I think it would be petty charging them $10 to go do what they need to do.
Makes sense.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor? opposed? No?
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, the pavement management presentation. Chairman Ralph Olson and Nathan White.
We'll try and get through this as quickly as we can. We've already gone a long ways, and it looks like you've got some more to go tonight. First of all, I wanted to thank both Don and Danielle because they gave quite a lot of help to the committee when we were going through the various phases on that, and Danielle helped to pull together a lot of the presentations, so their efforts are well appreciated. What we want to do is kind of run through a quick historical background of how we got here, what we were tasked with, the process that we went through, the current conditions of the roads, the financing options that we looked at, and finally, the ultimate recommendations of the committee. At this point, Raymond has just under 40 miles of public roads. Thirty-six of those are paved. In 2011, the town voted to create a road improvement study committee to recommend financial strategies in order to complete capital improvement work on the roads, and the members in that committee were myself, Sam Gifford, Bob Harmon, and Nathan White. And the thinking behind having the committee formed was the road maintenance and road repair work has perennially been a baby that gets kicked down the road, and because the dollars that are involved, many times, those dollars get moved year to year, and the work is not, you know, isn't getting done, and the condition of the roads is not improving without the work. So in order to avoid bigger costs, the idea was to look at where we are, what it would take to get roads up into condition and keep them in a reasonable state going forward. In the past, recognizing that, the town did bond for $950,000 back in 2004, and that was used for some work that was done at that point, and it was really a recognition at that point of the fact that that budget had been continually being cut and cut and cut, and it was a stab at trying to put some money out there to catch us back up and get us into a position where we weren't going to be having a lot of things falling down around our ears. Typically, we had gone on a pay-as-you-go model, which we put in about $240,000 a year, and that really covered us basically just on the maintenance side. And you'll see on the next slide, when we look at where the actual expenditures are and then factor in for CPI and the increases in the cost of oil, our actual money that we put into doing work on the roads has really been going down or really staying at below that $180,000 figure when we bring that back to an 05, 06 reference point. So we're not, you know, we're doing a lot to try and keep things going, but we're doing with a little bit of money, and we're getting to the point where we're going to have to soon have to pay the piper. So the committee really looked at three different items. The first was determining the condition of the road inventory, and then determining the priority that the roads needed to be worked on. And then the third item was to investigate and recommend ways of funding the proposed work. So right now, I want Nathan to kind of run through this part, which is really what the condition of the roads are and what we looked at from that standpoint.
Thank you, Ralph. When we started to do the pavement management program, we had to break the roads out into two, or they wanted you to break it out into different categories. We chose two, commuter roads and development roads. It's pretty much all we have in Raymond. That gave you a base to start with as to how to rate your roads for traffic volume, condition, and so on. This is a traffic study done by GP Cog, gives you an idea of incoming and outgoing traffic. It was complicated to understand how they were trying to explain it as to where your core is and where you're going to study for your traffic volume the most. It's the circle of the town is basically what that is. Private roads in Raymond are maintained, obviously, by the landowners and the property owners, and that kind of pushed the majority of our dirt roads out. Town roads will be funded by local government and town funding, and state roads are obviously M D O T, which is 85, 302, and 121. And state roads are obviously MDOT, which is '85, '02, and '121. The RSMS program gives you the ability to prioritize roads, budget for them, and maintain, give you a maintenance history on all the roads. The guidelines for setting up the program, they give you, in the program, they give you guidelines when you go out and look at the roads. And there are alligator cracking, longitude cracking, hedge cracking, potholes, the roughness of the roads, drainage, and general condition of the road. And when you're doing a condition survey, it will give you a guideline to follow on that. And based on the, based on that information, it will prioritize the roads for you and bring them into a budget for you for tonnage prices. This is your average road condition decline curve. Basically, in about 20-year period, your roads go from perfect to garbage. You want to keep them in that 10-year area. So once they drop down off that curve, past the 10-year mark, you get into a lot of money for reconstruction and rehabilitation. I've lost my place here again. Current road conditions. If you go with no maintenance, obviously.
Well, this was where, how the program delineated.
Correct.
Which, you know, where it was going to get rated, whether it needed routine maintenance, no maintenance, or major work.
Correct. When you put all this information into the program, it breaks it out into either no maintenance, routine maintenance, preventive maintenance, or rehabilitation. I'm going to have to pass this on to Danielle Ford.
Nate, I think you're doing great considering you're, if you are, just not feeling well today.
Just wing it. You know it all.
Well, I do. It was a tough one on this one.
Well, don't worry about the slides. Just tell us.
I mean, we can read the slides.
Yeah, you know it.
Essentially, what the slides are showing here is looking at our current inventory. Where are we condition-wise versus the road inventory that we have? So you can see that we're sitting there with about 15 miles that are in the no-maintenance-required area, the no-maintenance-required zone. We've got about five miles that are sitting in the routine maintenance road. We've got about another three or so that are in the preventive. Then we get into the two bigger areas, which is where really the big dollars start to come in, which is the rehabilitate and the reconstruct, which amounts to about another 15 miles of where the road. And that's really where the big cost issues are coming. You know, as we, when we start looking at where the money and things lay out, the no-maintenance, routine maintenance, and preventive really come under the, will fall under the maintenance portion of the budget. And the rehabilitate and the reconstruction will fall under the new money that we're looking, that we're really looking to integrate into the system.
Chief?
Yeah.
Chief Tupper?
Yes. So the next slides essentially look at the drainage issue. And where we're looking at there, we had two conditions. We had either good drainage or poor drainage. And the next slide will show you about where we are, that we're looking at about 22 miles that have good drainage, but we've got about 15 miles that have poor drainage. So again, that's going to factor into what money is needed to bring those back up and keep those. You know, the whole intent behind this is trying to prevent major, major reconstruction. And so what do we need to do to keep what we've got active and rehabilitate what is falling down around our ears right now? You know, then what was looked at was what is the actual cost to do various, the various tasks in there? And that loaded back then into the pavement management program. And so we're looking at about $65,000 to complete a mile with overlay every year. And that should be doing that about four miles a year. So that gets into the maintenance side. And then we'll start to look at, you know, the additional for ditching and drainage, drainage-related work. So going at that, you know, looking at all those things combined, we really started looking at how are we going to pay for all this? And so we looked at four models. The first was pay-as-you-go and local bank financing, financing through the main municipal bond bank, or doing a town-issued bond. Pay-as-you-go is the model that essentially we had been using for years and years. The, you know, what we're looking at there is maintaining a part of that, but using that as the maintenance side. And then we're looking, then we'll be looking at the reconstruction side. But the big issue that you have with pay-as-you-go is that it is, you know, there's a big chunk of dollars there, and it's always been that political football that when push comes to shove, that 275 then becomes 250 or 225 or whatnot, and we're starting down that negative slope again. So that's the biggest drawback you have to that. I mean, you know, it had been a perennial way of doing it in the town for many, many years, is you don't bond, you pay, you know, you buy something where you can afford it. But that's fraught with problems there. The other thing in looking at the pay-as-you-go is that we do have some bonds that are retiring in the next fiscal cycle, which will free up about $281,000 in the budget during the year, which could go to that. But that also precludes the, you know, other needs in the town that may be looking at some areas where that money could go also. So then we also looked at the financing options, and one was to look at local bank financing. And the advantage of that is it can be done very quickly. The disadvantages, the terms that you get on that for loans that are under $500,000, you've got a repayment time of five years, and it's about a 3% interest rate on that. For loans larger than five, or larger than a half million, repayment with repayment terms that are larger than five years, the rate is going to vary. It's only going to be fixed in the first five years, and then the subsequent years will be tied to a variable index. So it really leaves us with not a guarantee of what that total payout is going to be on that. So the next thing we looked at was going to the main municipal bond, which the town has used on a number of occasions before for fire trucks and things of that nature. It's an easy vehicle that's available to us. But they only issue bonds twice a year, and you have to have your application in four months prior to the sale of the bonds. It's low cost to get in there. The current rates on a 10-year bond are at 3%, but it increases year to year, and ends at 4% at year 10. So you also have no flexibility on how you can take that money and how you can tailor your payouts on that. On the main municipal bond, the funds have to be expended within a three-year period, which is fairly standard, is what we also going to see on the town-issued bond. So the other one thing we looked at was actually the town going out and going out in the bond marketing and getting a bond. And this is something, it takes about eight to 12 weeks to do that. You do have to go through and get a bond rating through either Moody's or S&amp;P. There's people that we talked with that will take us through that process. The costs on that are about $40,000, so it's a little, it's higher than what the cost is for the main municipal bank. But that cost gets rolled into the overall price of the bond. The advantage that you have there is the, right now, those bonds, we're looking at about 2% on that. We also have the flexibility and how we can tailor the payouts on that, how we can tailor the, how we can actually structure the bond and the repayment schedules and things like that. So it gives us a lot more flexibility than we have. It also, once we get through the process of getting the bond rating and whatnot, can lead us and help us into other bondings if the town wants to look at that for other things as we go forward. Because once we've got that, once we have that established, then it's something that we can draw on, and it's just a matter of maintaining where we are on that. The other thing that would have to be done on that is they will do an evaluation on the town when they're doing that rating, and they're going to look at current loads, which we're in good shape on. They're going to look at our current capital inventories and things like that and see where we are, just to make sure that there's no major time bombs that are out there looking that are going to blow up in their face and lead you to the position where you wouldn't be able to repay the bond. So that leads us then to what the committee's final recommendations were. And what we're recommending is two avenues. And one is the maintenance side. And we're, you know, in order to maintain roads and keep those so that we've got things in a 10-year cycle, we're looking at maintaining a level of $275,000 a year, an index at the COLA for ongoing maintenance on the roads. And then on top of that, on the reconstruction, we're looking at asking the town to go for a 10-year, $2 million bond, which would then allow us to do reconstruction work on 13 and a half miles of road. And the selection on that road would be driven by the pavement management plan, which, of course, would then be controlled by the select board. But the issue would be to use that as the tool and to vary from that really only in the instance of an emergency or major changes or something like that. But to really use that as the guiding implement so that the people can see that there is logic behind it. And it certainly makes it much easier to say, you know, this is the reason for that, because you run into a situation where a road may be deteriorating quicker because of the traffic on that, and the management program will pick that up easier than can be. And it's a lot easier to explain that when people start looking at that. The other thing that comes into play, of course, is Route 121 and '85, which in theory should be paid for by the town, by the state. We recognize that that probably ain't going to happen all the way. So what we're saying there is we'll probably get into a similar situation as we have in the past, which is looking at the state or the town having to put in 50%, but kind of putting a hard mark there that says, we would not do work on that unless it was a minimum of 50% payout by the state on those. And so, you know, you've got the written report, which also has the road condition report, road by road, as well as the recommended priority list for the reconstruction. Questions?
No, I was just going to comment. So where we go from here is we'll incorporate this recommendation into the town budget proposal, capital budget proposal. Because of the timing, it's not going to come into play until the next fiscal year in terms of the bond repayment schedule, should it be approved. But it'll go through the approval process, board, selectmen, budget finance committee. And assuming that the town meeting were to approve it, we would follow this recommendation. That's my intention, Danielle.
Yeah, what you're, I mean, there's two elements. The first is looking at the, you know, that 275.
Yeah, I'm assuming we're going to continue with that.
275, but the bonding proposal obviously would have to be, that would have to be voted on by the town. So, you know, that would have to be, it would have to be approved by the select board to get put on.
Right. What I'm saying is I'm planning on incorporating it into the budget.
Right.
Running it through the process. And I think Joe originally outlined the timeline on that. And so I'm planning on moving forward on that timeline.
Right. Yeah, because there's no way you could have, there's no way you could get the bond done in order to have that affect this budget that is under review.
It would be next construction season.
Right.
Right, but I think the approval of the thing.
The approval would be good, because that would allow you to begin, you know, if we can get approval, you know, if we look at it and get approval at the town meeting, get the things in process and whatnot, by the time the bond were issued, you wouldn't be in a position really to spend until the spring anyway. This would then give Public Works the time over the winter to really lay out and get things set so that once optimal construction time comes, that they can get right on it.
And I think we're about 240 now on the maintenance side of things. So we would have to come up with about $35,000 to fill that gap. And then on the bonding, you have three years to spend it down.
Correct.
So the plan needs to be in place to make sure that you're ready to go and you have.
Right. Well, we had the same issue years, several years ago, we borrowed, I think it was 900, 950, I forget, thereabouts. But, and we had that same issue. And it was actually a challenge to spend down that amount of money in the three-year cycle.
Right.
We did that. We got the work accomplished that we set out to do. But yeah, having a plan ready to go and having the work lined up, the contractors lined up, your bids and so forth, very critical.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like it should be that difficult, but for a small town to do that in that timeline, it is.
It's like anything else. It's planning, planning, planning. I mean, you know, you've got a lot of, you have a lot of work you have to accomplish in that three-year period. You've only got, you know, you've got that six, maybe seven-month optimal construction time. So, I mean, it's not like you've got 12 months a year to work, you know, for the work to be done, but.
It's important to do both things concurrently, that you have the maintenance budget, 275, and the bond to reconstruct.
Right, right, right. I left that piece out, but naturally, we're going to, the rule of thumb with the road issue is you keep your good roads good, you put extra attention into maintaining the roads that are in good condition. That's the maintenance budget. And then you work towards your poor-conditioned roads in a priority system that you decide and gradually work through that list.
Charlie?
Using the model of the town doing its own bond, does that three-year limitation of the main bond bank apply?
Yes.
Yeah, you still, even if the town issues.
That comes from the bonding agencies.
The bonding agencies still want you to spend that money in that three years.
Within a three-year period. So at 2%, what, at the end of 10 years, what's the total interest on that?
I don't have, I don't have the amortization schedule here, but it's.
Four hundred, probably 500,000.
The interest at 2%?
What we'll do is.
2% of 2 million.
We'll run amortization schedules.
Yeah, well, I did, so just, so we can, you know, and I'm surprised that wasn't part of this discussion. And I think maybe, based on the number of questions I have about the financial recommendation, particularly, I mean, I've gone through this with the Cumberland County Civic Center and how that was not put together so that it was understandable to the folks to, I think there's a lot of information here. It's $142,000 that will basically be putting into both interest over a 10-year period and spending the money in three years and saddling the folks of the town of Raymond with that debt for seven more years.
Right.
I think that's a critical piece. That's $142,000. And in the body of your recommendation, you're saying we're going to have to do it again in 10 years. So now we're talking an interest of $284,000 that we're paying out plus fees of $40,000 each time to issue these on our own. I think there's a better model, but I'm be willing to share my data with the committee and have a discussion. But I really do believe this should be a workshop item for this board. We tend to, many times, gloss over, and I appreciate the hard work of this committee, which included the chair of the budget finance committee, the chair of the select board. But when I'm told that we kick the baby down the road, the people responsible for kicking the baby down the road is the budget finance committee, the select board.
That's right.
And town administration.
Yeah.
So we're the body that's made that decision to do that and not adequately fund. We have a problem, but I think we should be looking at this far more with a financial, the same type of eye you would have if I went in and was getting a mortgage on a house. You'd want to know what's the exact interest rate over 10 years and be able to have that. And I'm surprised it's not in this, but I think it's maybe a discussion.
Yeah, this is the introductory presentation of the concept. The information that you suggest is going to be developed and put into the budgetary materials. And, you know, what Ralph says is absolutely accurate, you know, and I know you like history. And so quickly, I'll tell you, a little bit of history is, you know, about 11 years ago, I came to the town and said, you know, you may recall this, the town meeting, where I said, what we really need is a one-time increase in the budget to address the road system. And here's how we do it. You know, I have experience in other places. Here's how we do it, town of Raymond. And they said, no, thank you. Come back and give us a budget with no increase. And they boat-rolled us out of town. Remember that deal?
Hmm.
So that was the first time we talked about roads in a big way. And so we've come every year and tried to do this. But the overarching goal, and I know that you're a supporter of the overarching goal concept, has been no tax increase. know that you're a supporter of the overarching goal concept, has been no tax increase. We've, we've done that, we've accomplished that, and we talked about this a little bit last night. It's now time to, to move beyond that somewhat, and, and maybe there's a creative way to fit it in, make it all happen, I hope there is, we'll try to find it, and so that's what we're going to do. The detail that you suggest is absolutely essential, we're going to put it together, we'll have it be a part of the package.
Charlie?
I agree very much with your idea of a workshop. I think it's required, at least in my case.
Because another point just to make is we also have another bond due, the, the 2002 consolidated bond will come due and free up another $206,000 in 2017, which is also within the life of your proposal for a two-year bond, so I don't disagree with you, Mr. Willard. I, I, I'm not saying kick the baby down the road again, I'm just saying that with the amount of time that, because I, I had a sense that since we're moving forward the budget, we had our first Budget Finance Committee meeting last night, that we're more on a critical path to trying to make this decision, and this board, and with the, with the good efforts of the Road Improvement Committee, I, I just believe there may be other models that we could be looking at that are, are more financially sound.
Yeah, you know, I mean, we're, you know, I mean, the, the reason that, you know, I mean, of course, you know, anyone knows, knows me, knows that, you know, I've, I've never been the biggest proponent of bonding. I mean, you know, I, I've, I've been one of those, been on the, on the kind of the page you go or accrue and then, accrue and then whatever. What's kind of tipping it at this point is where we are with bond rates right now. At, at 2% on bond rates, you know, versus, you know, if, if we had looked at the same thing six years ago when rates, when bonds were at the 7% range, you know, it probably wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have had the same appeal as it does with it sitting there at 2%. Where will it be in, where will it be in another year? You know, roll the dice and see.
One other thing that's important on this, just quickly, is that when you compare the private issue to the main bond bank, the main bond bank, make no mistake, builds their costs into their rate, and so you're paying upfront if you, if you do the private issue, but you see a lower interest rate. But, but we're not disagreeing on any of this, though. I, I agree with you, let's get the real detail on it, on all the different options that we can think of. If you have some, you want to send them along, we'll get the information, we'll put it together, let's put it in the packet and have a great discussion about it. But tonight is just the kickoff, here's the concept, here's what we've been doing. Maybe it's time, Town of Raymond, maybe it's time to move forward. I would say the town meeting will decide that. Maybe it's not time.
And, and just to put it in, if I may, to put it in a little bit of a comparison is, if we were to self-fund this right now, what we'd be doing is going to the taxpayers in the Town of Raymond, because I did hear at one of the meetings, the Public Works Director said, "If you gave me a half a million dollars a year for 10 years," that's $5 million, "if you gave that to me for 10 years, we'd have perfect roads in the Town of Raymond." Well, if you add in the retiring bonds that I see in 2014 and 2017, you may actually be going before the voters in this town and asking them for an override of LD1 of 23. If you throw in the 35,000 for maintenance on top of it, 25, 30 cents. Again, I, I have a lot of faith in the folks in the Town of Raymond that if you put before them a justifiable program, that, that, my, my faith in them, in the, in the voter is that they'll, they'll approve it. So just keep that in the mix so that if we do go forward with a workshop, that we don't, just because of our past history of kicking the baby down the road, so to speak, that maybe isn't our future.
True. It, you know, it, it really becomes an issue of looking at, looking at a couple of things. Number one is, where are we now, and, you know, where do we, where do we need to be? Where do we, where do we want to be? And, you know, we're at a point where if we, if we start going too much further down the road before we make, you know, make some moves on that, that it's going to cost us a heck of a lot more to repair those than what we can do it for right now. And that's, that's the overriding, the overriding thing that we were looking at there is, I mean, no one wants to spend money that doesn't need to be spent, but by the same token, we all drive down those roads, and you want to drive down something that keeps you on the road, not knocks you off the road.
Thanks very much, Ralph. Thanks, very good presentation. So we move along. By the way, Charlie, isn't it kicking the can down the road?
Well, I, I would say, but the baby came up, so.
It was cringe in our retirement.
Yeah, I, I did.
Throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Yeah, I tried to.
Throwing the can out with the.
I tried to keep it consistent with the presentation.
Consideration of appointment of registrar, registrar of voters, Louise.
By state statute, under 30A, every two years, the town is supposed to appoint a registrar of voters on the uneven years, and this is an uneven year, so I would appreciate if you could appoint me as the registrar of voters in league with the fact that I'm the town clerk.
I'll make a motion to appoint Louise Lester as the registrar of voters for the next two years.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
None.
Next. Consideration of quitclaim deeds. Sukar, as submitted by Sukar.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of this quitclaim deed on for Michael and Jennifer Whitney from MAP 11, Lot 17A.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes. Okay, Mike. Let's see, Raymond Village Library update, Selectmen and Light Brothers.
Thank you, Sam. I wanted to start by saying that library has changed its hours as of the first of the year. We've decided to close at 5:00 on Sundays rather than 7:00 on Sundays based on traffic. I can't imagine, nobody wants to go to the library at 7:00 o'clock on a Sunday night, but that appears to be the, the rules. So that's the big news, since I talked to you last, in, in terms of positive change, we do have some, some negative news. Our capital campaign is, is lagging a little, so I've asked Christine to come and, and give you an overview. Christine is the current chair of the library board, so Christine, if you would introduce yourself and give us a few words.
Good evening. I'm Christine France, I'm the co-president of the Board of Trustees of the Raymond Village Library, and I'm here to say a few words about our annual appeal. In November of this year, we sent out an annual appeal letter to our year-round and summer residents. The annual appeal is our most important fundraiser, and your donations help provide the funds needed for books, programming for all ages, and helps us to continue to provide you with the best services possible. Your donation will help us continue our mission of enriching the lives of everyone who visits our library. We're asking you to give whatever you can, no donation is too small. You can donate by mail, in person, at the library, or electronically through the donate link on our website. We thank everybody for your support. If you have already donated, we thank you twice. If you've not yet donated, we hope you consider it. Thank you very much. And I think Sally has a few words she'd like to say.
Hi, I'm Sally, and I'm, I'm very glad I came tonight because I learned some very important information that I didn't know. And what I really, really like about learning that information is it does help me be more informative, more informative to the residents that come into the library. Sometimes meetings are hard to sit through for some people, but I, I like the meetings.
Sally, would you say who you are?
Yeah, I'm Sally Holt, I am the director of the library.
Thank you.
I thought everyone knew. But it helps me just learn more about, about the town, and I've, I've really enjoyed working here a lot, and I'm, I'm really glad to be at the library. And before, I just, I have a few words I wanted to say. I had something really kind of interesting that happened today. When I went to the library, checked the messages, and there was a message from a business in Wyndham, and they said they had found a wallet, and the only thing that they could, that they could find in the wallet was the library card. So I went to the registration drawer and looked up the person's name, and I called the person, and they were actually out on the street near the place where they lost the wallet. And I said, gee, you know, your wallet has been found, I think it was Card Mart or something like that in Wyndham. And the people were very pleased to hear that because they had been looking for a couple of hours for this young woman's wallet. So they had the library card, called the library, I gave them the, I called the woman whose card it was, and off they went to get the wallet. So I thought that was a really neat story. What I wanted to tell you is the book barn's going really well. I had spoken to you two or three months ago, and I want to thank the town's support. In fact, the day that the, the book barn was put in to store the books that we sell for another fundraiser for the year, Dawn was there, Chris Hansen was there, Nate was there, and Shirley Bloom was there, who's one of our trustees, and I know that they all came down because I was worried about it. I don't know what I was worried about exactly, but I really wanted it to work out well. So they were great, they came down. Again, the Sunday hours have changed, but I compared the statistics of this year to last year, and our, we had 30 more people come in and about 40 more books go out, even though the, the library closed a couple hours early. So that was, that was really great. I wanted to mention to you that the library was started over 100 years ago by volunteers, and if we did not have volunteers helping us in the library, as they do, it would be very difficult. There's a lot of work to do, and they were great help. So what I'm here today for is to ask if there are people in the area that would like to volunteer, in the area of programming, fundraising, helping with repairs around the library, and other projects. We're especially looking for all the, we welcome any volunteer with any kind of skills. We're looking for someone that has computer skills, because as you know, technology has become very big in libraries and in the world, and we really need some people with those types of skills. And again, I've really enjoyed being here tonight, and if you haven't been by the library lately, I'd like to invite all of you to come to the library. If you don't have your library card or you need to update your library card, come on in, I'll give you a tour of the library, and we'll have a great time. Thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Next item, consideration of amending or repealing the conditional zoning district outlined in the land use ordinance under Article 4H dash one, or dot one. Charles Levitt.
Do you want me to give a little update on?
Yes, I'm glad you reminded me of that. Before we go any further, I think an update is appropriate here that will.
Well, I, I came up, there's been a lot of talk about this, as you highlighted earlier, Mr. Levitt, you've, you know, requested to be on the agenda several times, so here it is, and I thought that the thing to do would be to, to try to clarify the issue with respect to the interest of the, the parties that were potentially developing the site. So, so I called US Cellular, and I was able to determine, surprisingly, it really surprised me, that they have no remaining interest in the site. And even their attorney, when I made that inquiry, was, was, I think he used the word shocked about that. So I thought, well, let's take this a step further, let's, let's see if we can contact the property owners and see what their interest is. So I did that, and I had a nice chat with Mrs. Major, and she tells me that she has no, no intention to move forward under her ownership with the development of a cell tower on the site, which also was, was very surprising to me. But I think valuable information, both. And so I, I spoke with various principals of the US Cellular, Ken Kuzera, and as I said, Richard Traughton, the attorney, and so I, I'd report that to you, and because our interest was, has been, will always be, the height of that piece of land, the potential for a shared use for public safety communications, but I, I have to report that it does not look like it would be imminent. So therefore, I guess at some level you could say it's up to the Selectmen, obviously, but may not be unreasonable to follow the course of action that you have been outlining. So that's new information.
Great, may I, may I introduce the?
Yes, of course.
The, the item first, and I, I appreciate that update. Chief, if you just give me, give me a minute. I had requested, and I can read it, I am requesting an agenda item to the Board of Selectment meeting for the purpose of discussing the repeal. I, I didn't insert the word amending, because amending could, with this document right now, could be very messy, and that's probably an, an issue left better for the planning board at some time in the future. So my intent was to say, we should repeal this, and even a repeal leaves that window of opportunity open for an additional six months until the June meeting, when it could potentially, if this board agrees, go before the voters. The chairman of the planning board has also offered to us, if we could move this item forward as a warrant article next, on the 16th, I believe, they, yes, on January 16th, the planning board would meet, they will be discussing all of their ordinances and holding public hearings. And graciously, the planning board chair, Pat Clark, has offered that if the Select Board could move quickly enough within a certain timeframe, they could include it in their public hearing, and I'm sure Danielle's going, oh, great, thanks a lot, but.
For the 16th.
For the 16th.
They have time for the 16th, they get one in February if they want.
So there's still an opportunity, and, and I know there's other things that have been pushed to February. So I, I, I want to thank the community coming together in the various boards now and Town Administration to, to do a little more research on this. And then last but not least, and, and the tragic and some would say miraculous event of January the 3rd, of the accident at Ganderbrook. And I'm sure the chief was probably going to make this, but in his incident report, and I want to read this to the public, and there's a certain amount of irony that goes with this, but also the reason why it's important for us to move forward and, and always critically be reviewing, not saying it's been done, it's an old issue. Our radio issues were many, even with a voter site at Ganderbrook, frequently we needed to run to a vehicle to use a more powerful mobile radio to reach dispatch and mutual aid units. Lack of staffing during this first hour of the call was huge, which I'm sure, taking an individual out of the field staff and putting him and setting him in a truck. So again, I appreciate everyone's hard work on this. That was the intention to begin with, to see how we can resolve this. If it's not going to go forward, as we now know, that conditional zoning goes with the land, so it ends up being a benefit to whoever owns the land without any recompense back to the town for have changed the ordinance to begin with. So again, thank you, that, I did that by way of introduction of the request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willard, appreciate it. Thank you for reading that, too, like it said, which is, is good, I don't know if the public does realize some of the things we do encounter in our day-to-day operations. I, I think that I was going to stand here and ask you tonight for your opinion as a board, whether we should also ask or approach the majors and see if, for public safety purposes, a public safety tower, similar to the one that we have at the town hall, could be installed at that location. I don't know all the legalities of this and whether or not the planning board or zoning committee could allow that within the current zoning change, or what would have to take place to make that occur. It is a good location, and it's obvious that the cell tower was looking for, the, the company was looking for a reason, as we were, too, and our radio company did identify that general area because of its height as, as a great spot for us. So as we look at this, and rather than close the door completely upon it, is there an opening or a window that public safety and public works, because they're having some issues as well, could be included, or a tower may, we may be able to approach the landowner and see if a tower could be constructed on their property for our use, and then, I guess at that point, right off the cell tower usage?
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yes, it could, yes.
I, I didn't think to ask her that question at the time because she was very adamant in her position that she wanted, you know, no tower, so I have not researched that point. I've only researched the point of the, the subject application tower is something that they do not wish to proceed with.
And that may be no tower, but maybe, maybe we should approach them and with the authority of the board, however you would direct us to do that, through the administration, through myself. myself, could make, approach them and ask that question.
Well, we could move forward, yes.
Chief, when you say, "public safety town use,"
Mm-hmm.
You're not talking a cell tower?
No.
What, what are you talking about?
If we could put our equipment on a tower at that site.
Like the one at town?
Like the one at town hall. Basically, it would be about the same height. We need to get ourselves above tree height, and that foot, the base elevation of that location is a hundred feet higher than where we are right now. So our eighty-something foot tower would now be a hundred feet higher than it is right now, which would help us tremendously, still keeping us below the threshold of, of licensure with the FCC, still keeping us below the threshold of allowing all that outside radio traffic noise, if you will, the floor noise coming into our system and interfering with it. But yet, it would give us a better location where we wouldn't be shadowed in those issues of North Raymond Road and Ganderbrook, et cetera, down over the hill here on eighty-five, et cetera, would be alleviated.
Profile of that antenna versus profile of the proposed antenna, does anybody know? I mean, we, we're talking a cell tower, big square thing versus a...
Yeah, I'm not a tower expert, Bruce.
They were looking at a monopole antenna with the tree at the top, the great big triangle, if you will, and our two antennas, if that had gone through, the proposal was to place them on the top of it. Our antenna here is basically the, the face of it, so about sixteen, eighteen inches, maybe, and it's a triangular tower. It, it's almost not visible, except for the location that it's in. I mean, we have our tower mounted ten feet away from the side of the town hall, with its infrastructure cabling, you know, attached to the ground all around the town hall. That placed in the woods or somewhere away from a road would really not be visible.
Eighty feet? I mean, many pine trees are, are eighty feet.
Correct. Eighty feet, our tower, our antenna is another twenty, it's on top of that. It does get us just above the trees in this area, but again, we're a hundred feet below that hill that's a half a mile away.
Does the signal go through trees?
Better than it goes through rocks and hills, yes.
Which would be the hundred foot?
Yeah.
So if you have an eighty-foot tower, twenty-foot, you might be at a hundred feet, no lights, no...
No lights required.
And there weren't any, I believe, for the...
Correct.
But a far lower profile than, than the original. Thank you.
The other, the other thing she said was, and I don't know how this came about, because, I mean, I assume that the interest somewhere came from the, the property owner, or at least there was an exploration of interest with the, with the US Cellular, it didn't originate with the town. But she did tell me that she felt that the, the tower, the subject tower, was incompatible with the farm use that she now believes is the, is what she would like to, to do with that property. So that's, and that's the end of the information I have now, that I think about our conversation.
That may be it, and I just feel personally, we should explore that avenue before we close the door.
Yes, Joe.
Maybe appropriate to table this item until, and allow the chief to...
We have time before the town meeting, so...
You can bring it back next meeting.
Yeah, we can bring it back.
I'll make a motion to table until the next meeting.
Okay.
Can we, can't talk about this after it's tabled, right?
Well, it hasn't been tabled.
I know, that's why I'm asking the question.
There's no discussion on a tabling motion.
But there's no discussion about the issue after the motion's table?
That's correct.
Because I have one more question.
All in favor of tabling this for the next meeting? Oppose? Three to two. Now we're into old business. Tax-acquired property update. You want to roll this one, Danielle?
Yep. So, um, the, the board instructed us to send out thirty-day notices to terminate tenancy, and based upon those notices, several things kind of happened. A couple of the properties were paid in full, and one of the properties that was on a payment arrangement, I don't know if you folks remember, the one that was about thirty-eight thousand dollars on twenty-five dollar a month, they actually were able to work something out with their bank based upon our pressure, because we were getting ready to move them into installment contracts, and they came forward and paid. So the town collected an estimated forty-four thousand five hundred dollars, probably a little bit more than that, and we got two more people off of the foreclosure list. But we do have, I believe, two properties that are left on the foreclosure list, and one of them, the Nine Peppercorn Way, is a residential home, but the, the gentleman is almost kind of like vanished from the face of the earth. We tried to have him served, and even the property that he has is an address in Naples is abandoned as well. So we've been unable to locate him. And then the Zero Cobb, we've had a kind of a couple conversations, one of them, it's a mother-daughter situation, and the mother contacted us and was going to kind of appeal to you folks to, instead of selling it, let her put it on the market and then pay off her back taxes and then be able to take the profits, if any. And then her daughter was in today, because the mother hadn't done that even though we spoke about it a month ago, the daughter was in today, and she said that she would like to put it on the market as well. But after speaking with the code enforcement officer, it appears that this is an unbuildable lot because of shoreline zoning, so I don't know if they'll even be able to quickly turn it over. So basically, I'm not quite sure where that property stands. So in all, I guess, the staff is just looking for a recommendation on the two properties that are left, and also, we have the four tax-acquired properties that we did take possession of, and only one of them, Zero Haskell Ave, map thirty lot sixteen, the conservation committee, committee recommended keeping that. So I just wanted to let, make you aware of those, if you did move towards sale, that we did have a, a larger group that could be included as well, so...
I'll make a motion to direct the tax-collecting to go after the two properties at Zero Cobb Road and Nine Peppercorn. I personally, on the other four properties, I would like a conversation with the conservation committee to find out why they want to hold on to that property, before I, you know, we move to sale on all those. So until, I, I'd like to have, maybe at the next meeting, Mr. Chair, bring in John Rand to explain why they think that's invaluable property.
I'll do.
And then proceed with the other two.
Great.
And have Cobb and Peppercorn been vetted in front of the RCC?
We did send them, but they haven't had a chance to fully investigate those properties yet, because they've been kind of dealing with some other issues.
I think this has proven to be a very worthwhile exercise, as you may be aware, we've cleared some significant accounts with this, and so I guess credit to the selectmen for pushing this issue, it, it worked.
Just leave a second on my motion, I guess.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Can I just ask clarification on, on what we're doing with those two properties?
You go through the procedure to acquire them.
To, to acquire them?
Yeah. And then the conservation committee can't look at the property until we actually acquire them.
Okay.
So hopefully, this will spur the owners to come in and pay their back taxes.
Or sell it.
Or set up a, a payment plan.
They can sell it, even though we put a lien on it.
Right.
That's what happened to one of them, but what happens is that we get made whole at the closing, right? But yes, they can, but it's, it's not exactly, there's a little bit of maneuvering to make that happen, but it can happen, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, yes.
And just as a follow-up comment, at some point in the future, this board should probably consider, again, institutionalizing the relationship between the TAP policy and the Raymond Conservation Commission. Right now, that's done as a courtesy, which I think we moved forward with initially, we, we probably didn't, we could have used it the very first time we instituted this policy and put it into effect, but right now, it's done as a courtesy, and I've seen it to be nothing but a positive for the town, as it's done in other towns. I believe the town of Brunswick, we saw some of the other models where it's automatically referred to another committee, like a conservation committee, just to see if retention does have a value to the town. So as, again, just a suggestion for the future.
We will get, so, see if we can get John in here.
Right, that might be a good time to talk to him about that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. What do we? Public comment? Public comment, yeah. Public comment?
I'm not getting it.
Yes.
Mike. Hi, Grace Levitt, Two Levitt Road. I was really intending to hear about the cell phone tower, and hopefully to push for repeal of that, but I also did want to mention something about the accident that happened at Ganderbrook, and I'm hoping that if you haven't already done so, that some sort of traffic study is going to be done, and that that intersection will be addressed. It's incredibly dangerous. I'm surprised that it wasn't a more tragic accident, I'm relieved it wasn't. I go through there very, very frequently, and each time, I kind of hold my breath, and I, you know, it's, it hopefully is going to be addressed with something, and whatever you can do to hasten that process, knowing that it has to go through the state.
Yes, you can.
That would be terrific, because the town's long overdue in that. And I might also add, are there other intersections like that that people are aware of, that they should bring to the attention of the town, that we maybe just kind of get used to going through, and we know it's dangerous, but we do it every day anyway? And maybe the citizens could be bringing some of those forward, so that we could be a little more ahead of the game on something, so that something like this doesn't happen again.
Right, excellent point, and actually, the Public Works Director, assisted by Danielle, Executive Assistant, before I even arrived at work the next day, had already initiated a DOT traffic study request, that's underway. It's the second or third one that's happened, but we're pushing them to come back with definitive recommendations for improvements to safety. We've done a number of things there already, they may not be apparent to people, but we have doubled up the signage, we're talking about increasing that signage, we're talking about, you know, other things that possibly, we've cut back brush, we've, you know, improved sightlines, we're working to do other improvements. I went down to Wyndham and looked at the, an intersection down there that had been the site of some really tragic accident in Wyndham, and so I saw what they had done with the, with the lighted warning signs, and also photographed those on the weekend, and called Nate, talked about that. So we've got a number of different ideas, a number of things that we're, that are under study, but it is, to, to follow up on your point, it is urgent that we do that, and we're doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Yeah, that accident on January third, that's the second in a month. We travel there every day. That woman, I was hooking Harley out, that woman was flying. They do seventy, eighty miles an hour on that road, side by side, passing, racing. I put holders across in front of the pasture, because I'm afraid a car's going to run, fly off the road into the pasture. We've asked for the sheriffs to come and sit, because they have put up the new signs, follow up the hill, but there is a lot of sand, and they, why not put a four-way? Stop, that would be perfect there. There's a street light at the end, so we know the road is there, but they do fly up and down ledge hill, it's horrible. And there's no, there's no ditches, because none of the ditching has been done on that road for thirty-two years. So it's all plain, if one of those cars go off, they're going to go up through one of the stone walls into one of the houses. So I'm glad the study is being done. We've asked for the sheriffs to come, we've offered for them to sit in our lower driveway, because it, it's bad. But that woman, she was lying, going down through, and I heard the crash, and I'm like, oh, no. I didn't know she had a child in the car.
Thank you. Town manager report?
I, I have a few things here. First is, and we spoke about this today, Sam, we have had some level of success in keeping our Raymond Beach clean, we haven't had as much success in seeing a successful business there. So what we are doing, though, is we're trying again, we're putting on a new RFP to see if we can't get an operator to keep Raymond Beach clean and to, to operate a, you know, some sort of vending operation there. So encourage people to take a look at the RFP, if you're interested, it'll be posted shortly, if it's not already. It is already, okay, thank you. And so, so that's out, and, and will be, proposals will be accepted back to the town office until February twenty-second, and the Board of Selectmen will then review them and make, make a, hopefully, a selection from a, from a good proposal. Last night, there was a slight edit to the Budget Finance Committee schedule, that's been amended, we copied that to you, I think today it is posted online, available for people to see the schedule, dates, and participate, participation's encouraged. Information, if anyone would like information, available from the town office. And this one, he said not to call him by his surname, so I'll say this one's for Ken, I did talk to Ken on the Cape today, and I talked to the chief about changing the sign at the public safety building. We will change the sign to indicate that thin ice is a problem on Sebago, please be careful, proceed with caution, particularly during the upcoming derby, and that will be accomplished when, chief?
Hopefully, by the end of the week.
By the end of the week, all right, so we'll put a thin ice warning up, and that's it.
Okay. What about the rabies?
Oh, I'm sorry, what about the rabies? Oh, they're okay, we, late. It's a rabies clinic will be administered by the Jordan Bay Veterinary Hospital at Raymond, Obeshaun Hardware from twelve to two, and a fee of ten dollars per animal for a one-year license. Please bring your animals and carriers leashed for safety reasons, and that'll be on January twelfth, so we have a rabies clinic. I think there are other rabies clinics happening around the area and other towns, too. If this one is not convenient for you, there may be other ones in other towns, and so, so definitely take advantage of that opportunity, January twelfth, Obeshaun.
Planning Board Ordinance Public Hearing, January sixteenth.
Sam?
Yes, I'm sorry, Charlie.
Just, since it was in the town manager's communication, just the...
Oh, I have another one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit off, and we also have to confirm the date of the next meeting. I was working off two different sets of notes here, I'm sorry. So we need to confirm the date of our next meeting, for February twelfth.
Ten, yeah, February.
I think I've got everything now, I don't know.
Payroll, fiscal warrants. Wait, there is something.
Yeah, and I, I just would like to add, and I know, because we have so much go through in Danielle, you're, you have to absorb so much, just as a follow-up to the proposal for the, the RFPs for the town beaches, at one time, Dana DeJardin had mentioned that, and, and it's not typical that you target nonprofit organizations, but there is a slight possibility, possibly through GP Cog, the Scouts, the Rotary, a youth build program that has some community development block grant money, may, they're, they're not typically looking, but if there was a way for us to maybe consult with a few folks and see if we could send that RFP out to them, it may be just one of those models, again, that Dana had brought up earlier, that we, we'd want to...
Yeah.
I think someone called today and asked if the Scouts would be involved.
Well, we could send that to the, we could send that to the known Raymond nonprofits, like Raymond Rack, the, the Scouts. I mean, we can send it to church groups, we can send it to any known nonprofits and encourage them to apply, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's...
Yes, sure, thank you for the reminder, you can do that.
Fiscal warrants.
The planning, uh, the planning board?
Yeah, announcement.
Oh, yeah, I have it here.
I, I don't, I don't have it on, on mine for some reason, so...
Charlie has it, why don't you let him read it?
Yeah, okay, I've got it.
I'm sorry, I don't have it on this one.
Well, there was for C under...
C, yeah.
Manager Communications, the Planning Board Ordinance Public Hearing is scheduled for January sixteenth.
Mine only goes to B.
Yeah, well, see, that's what I told you.
And then it has, it will deal with the addressing ordinance of the Raymond, under the Raymond miscellaneous ordinances, Article Six, Section D, reductions from minimum set facts of Raymond Land Use Ordinance, and Section sixteen G, appeals of the Raymond Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. The third item will be Article eight B, net residential density calculation of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance. And next would be Article nine, Section T, back lots and back lot driveways, Article twelve, applicability and definition of terms used in this ordinance of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance, Article three, definitions of the Raymond Subdivision Ordinance and Raymond Street Ordinance. So anyone who has been, has an opportunity to follow the planning board process will know that these have all been under discussion and their public hearing, which we were referring to, and I do want to add something to that, but I'll let Dawn take over from here.
Well, I just, I just wanted to thank you for, for doing that, and we had a few snafus tonight, we've got to come up with a consistency between, and everything was posted, published, but we've got some disconnects between the summary and the agenda in terms of making sure that everything's delineated on both. I'm, and this will sound halfway crazy, maybe, but I'm halfway thinking that maybe one... one document is the answer, we talked about that a while back, to make it easier on Danielle, and I think you wanted this, maybe this, posting the summary?
Right.
Maybe that's the answer, I don't know, but, but we've got some disconnects, and so I'm only, I'm only up to Item B on mine, so this is, apparently, but thank you.
More than welcome. The two items, I'd just like to, again, just to follow up on, on those, is that to try to make the website a little more user-friendly, there are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, non-land use ordinance, ordinances that are, that the town of Raymond has, typical budget finance cemetery, civil preparedness. When you go on the website, you have to go to code enforcement officer, town ordinances, land use ordinances, in order to get all of the ordinance for the town of Raymond, and nine of those have no, there's, there's a complete separation from the duties of the code enforcement officer and the land use ordinances. So just as a suggestion, to make it easier, if a member of the public wants to look up the recall ordinance for the town of Raymond, it would be easier for them not to have to think, oh, well, how does the CEO have anything to do with this, or the land use ordinance, because it doesn't. So there's two types of ordinances that we have, most of them are land use oriented, but those other nine are not. And the other, the other, just a comment, is that because of that, we also have, that came due on, on January 12th, the growth management ordinance, that is within the town of Raymond, land use ordinances, and right now, and I wish Chris was still here, but it's something we may want to discuss, is that right now, presently, based on just an average, come June of this year, we'll be limiting, because of the language in that ordinance, to approximately, we only were allowed 15 building permits under that ordinance this year, and since it's a running average, and there were only six, I believe, that we used, that, that now, it's possible that we might be, have constricted our ability to have building permits down to 12. If we were able to bust out of this recession, I would hate to see the town of Raymond be a roadblock or an impediment, because we'd have to go through the whole public hearing process and ordinance review and all that, so that's-
Yeah, that was addressed at the, I believe, July or August planning meeting, when the new planners and consultants came on board, and they said at this time that they chose not to, you know, review it because of the fact that Chris is seeing so few of them, he's only hitting about eight growth management permits every year, because it's not overall building permits, it's only growth management building permits.
Correct, yes.
So we are keeping track of that, and we'll bring it to the planner's attention, as well as like, as part of the normal ordinance revision process, so.
But unless we had a special town meeting, that would, that would fall into the next year's cycle.
Right, right, but, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett, thank you.
So, so no one's going to be upset if we go down, we dump the agenda and go to the agenda summary, one document? That way, we don't have this problem of editing back and forth. And it also addresses a concern, I think, that Mr. DeJardin made a number of meetings ago, about more, more complete information, so-
Makes sense.
So we'll go to one document, and the only reason there's two documents is, there's always been two documents, and when I came here, there were two documents, I don't know why. So I've just continued that fine tradition, but one document makes more sense.
Thank you. Fiscal warrants?
All right, make a motion to accept payroll expense summary dated 1/8/2013 for the amount of $94,887.32.
Second. All in favor?
Also make a motion to accept treasurer's warrant dated January 8th, 2013, for the amount of $53,761.72.
Second. All in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?